Hello, good evening. Tonight is the time and place for the only regularly scheduled school board meeting for the month of January. Welcome to everybody here with us in the boardroom. Welcome to anybody watching live on YouTube or watching later on delayed broadcast. Let me introduce the folks here at the board table. Board members to my right, starting at the end, Karina Hernandez, Nico Agüero. To my left, Jan McGinnis, Mike Miller, Sarah Falters. And here at the center table, we have Paulette Newbold, the board secretary, Dr. Theron Schudie, the superintendent of schools, and I am Sean Heitman, the board vice president. B. Niblock is absent this evening, as you can probably tell. Would you all please join me in reading the mission of the Marshalltown School District? Developed learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. And then let's all stand as you're able, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, we have three amendments. We've included some stipends in the consent agenda that we recommend go to select finance or business department members in lieu of a position that we have yet to be able to replace. So a lot of people are working extra in that office at current time to pick up the slack there. Also, we had in the consent agenda the Think Kids contract, but we didn't have the actual contract, so we've added that since this weekend. And then also, there is a warranty that we need the board to approve for the roofs on the structures at the new tennis court facility. So we've added that to the consent agenda.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Seconded.
Agüero, Falters, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we need to open the public hearing on disposition of obsolete equipment. This is for the sale of a 2006 white Ford F-350 truck and a white 2007 Ford F-250 four-by-four. Is there anybody here to give comment at the public hearing? Paulette, did we receive any comment?
Signal written or...
With that, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Sodders.
So tonight, we have brought before you Woodbury third grader Theo Lewis. He is an incredible young student. He's a third grader at Woodbury Elementary. And he has an incredible interest in aviation, and he has followed that interest this semester by doing a research project where he interviewed four pilots. So I was, yep, Theo is right here. And also here is Nicole Holman-Linkelma. She is Theo's XLP instructor at Woodbury. So they're going to talk a little bit about the work that Theo's done this semester.
Okay. Okay, so, let's see. The first person I met was Andrew Lopez. He is in Texas. He is an airline transport pilot, which is actually what we would think of as commercial. And he also told me about the Young Eagles program, which is a program for where kids can get free flights by, from a pilot, and they get to fly the plane a little bit. He also told me that flying as an airline transport pilot was a very good paying job. Some pilots get paid $1 million a year, seriously. He also led me to meet Gary. I'll tell you about him in a minute. And then later that day, I met Bruce Grumstop. He is in Marshalltown. He is a flight instructor and a commercial pilot. Actually, "commercial" means for hire. And he also told me about the EAA's, AKA the Experimental Aircraft Association. He told me about their B-25 Berlin Express. If you don't know what a B-25 is, it is a kind of propeller-driven bomber that was used in World War II. And now I'm going to tell you about Gary Bradenberg. He is also in Marshalltown. He is the Young Eagles guy here. When I first met him in person, he brought me some magazines, and he is an EAA member. As I said before, it is also known as the Experimental Aircraft Association. Then I met Gil Leifem. He is also in Marshalltown. He is a private pilot, which means he flies for fun. And he also flew in the Vietnam War, and he flew the F-4 Phantom on Titch Street. Then I met Mark Ketchum. He is in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. He is a stunt pilot. He flies for the Vandad Squadron. He is also an aerospace engineer. He taught me the great experiences of being a pilot by taking me to the airport. I got to sit in a crop duster. It was huge. Then last, I met Eric Ladette. He is from Ames. He is an ISU student of mechanical engineering. He is also an instrument-rated private pilot, working on his commercial license. He also recommended some flight training books to me. And before I go, and that is all about my, I did the, about me meeting the pilots, but before I go, I want to make one thing perfectly clear, no matter how you're watching this. I and every other person that is somewhat famous is just an ordinary person that has an amazing opportunity.
Thank you, Theo.
As Theo just pointed out so eloquently, Marshalltown provides its students with many opportunities. Theo is one of those students who always has fantastic questions, often unexpected. And one day this fall, Theo, who I've been working with virtually this semester, came to me and said, "I want to learn about flying." And I said, "Okay, can you be a little more specific?" And so he said, "I want to know everything there is about flying." And so I said, "Okay." So we started with some very basic flight principles and science facts of how planes fly and things like that. We quickly moved into types of aircraft. He has a special affinity for World War I aircraft, so we studied those a lot. And then one day, he came to me and said, "I want to fly." And so I said, "Okay, this now exceeds my knowledge of..." So I reached out to many of the staff here in Marshalltown, and they had connections to pilots, which helped me connect them to Theo. And through that, as he pointed out, he was able to learn not only about piloting as a career, but engineering and different ways that he could achieve that dream. And so I just, the opportunities that Marshalltown gives its students is fantastic. And that's it.
Theo, have you gotten to go on any flights?
Not yet. But as soon as the weather gets better, I'm going to go on that Young Eagles flight, as I told you before.
Good.
Hello, whoever's watching this.
Awesome job.
Good job.
Nice job. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We've got minutes from our December 21st board meeting and minutes from our January 13th special board meeting. Are there any corrections to be made in those? Anything in personnel, other than the amendments I see are in there for the, those stipends? Anything of note? Interagency agreements and contracts. We've got the Contract for Defined Learning Access Agreement for Marshalltown Learning Academy, an agreement with Massachusetts General Physicians Organization, the Warranty Agreement for the roofing at the tennis complex storage and restroom building, and the Think Kids Agreement. And then we've got one interagency agreement with Union Community School District for a special ed student, and then one with Council Bluffs for a general ed student. Open enrollments, we have one in, two out. Anything of note, Paulette? In monthly bills or in the monthly, or in the monthly financial report?
No.
Any questions about any of those things for Paulette? We've got one glass table with black metal base from the high school that is to be disposed of as obsolete. And we have one early graduate from the Marshalltown Learning Academy. I assume she'll graduate at semester? Questions about anything in there? If not, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Agüero McGinnis, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries six to zero. Anybody on the pink sheet? And do we have any public comments submitted virtually?
No.
Okay. Then we are up to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act resolution. Dr. Schudie.
So you may recall that during, from the summer or late spring to December 31st, the federal government had made a provision for the private and public sector to afford their employees up to 10... Oops. Okay, accidentally did that. So I get for sticking the phone on the floor. Adam?
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system.
Can you get that?
Six, four, one, eight, four, 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 eight, five.
Thank you. The federal government made provision for up to 10 COVID-related leave days beyond what people would normally have. That ended for the public sector in, as of December 31st. And so this resolution, which be a local board decision, is to continue to grant our employees access to those 10 COVID-related leaves, not adding to what originally was afforded, but making access to those 10 total days for employees through March 31st of this year, which is when the provision for the private sector ends. And the way that we are looking at it, it simply provides equity for all of our employees because obviously, some were fortunate to have avoided a COVID-related leave or had minimal number of needs for that, and some absolutely needed use of that first semester. And as I think everybody is aware, the potential still exists for people to be negatively impacted, whether they are ill, or a family member is ill, or they wind up needing to be quarantined and that sort of thing. So personally, I think it's a great gesture on behalf of the board and district to allow that provision to continue to exist to March 31st. And we will intend to fund that by making use of some of the CARES dollars that we will be receiving soon in the second allocation.
Can you tell us where we are on vaccinations? Have any of our teachers and school personnel received vaccinations yet?
Yeah, well, I just, you know, all we know for sure is what we've been told by the federal or state government, that the projection is the 1B category, which is where our education workforce would fall, would not happen any sooner than February 1st. So that's about all we know at this point. I'm hoping it's closer to February 1st than not for that first dose. And once we're able to disseminate that first dose, and there's a 28-day wait before we can start to administer the second dose, assuming those are here in time. I think the biggest part of the concern is the quantity of the vaccines that will be sent to the state and distributed to the counties and then... So we're having to, and I'm sure the medical facilities had to do this with the first wave, as well as that, you know, we're having to prioritize employees based on most important to vaccinate first through death in the event that we have a limited supply available. But we're, once it is made available, we will definitely be moving on that quickly and strategically. And Stacy Tool Crawford, our lead nurse, and myself are working closely with Pat Thompson from Marshall County Public Health to get all the logistics figured out.
Well, it certainly makes sense to extend this.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Want a motion for approval?
That'd be great.
So moved.
Miller Hernandez, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries six to zero. Dr. Stevenson, Mr. Goslinga?
That's a good one.
This is in honor of Mike.
That one's better than mine.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Mr. Gosling and I are here tonight to seek your approval, to submit a formal application to the Department of Education to continue with a virtual school option for our Marshalltown students for the 21, 22 school year and beyond. We did not have to seek formal approval because everyone in Iowa was able to do remote or virtual school this year. But moving forward, we'll have to get formal approval. And so we've been working behind the scenes on this to come up with some draft documents for PK-12. And we hope with your approval tonight that Eric and I will be able to complete the application and get a quick turnaround response from the department. Did you want to share anything, Eric?
Yeah, so we've had a number of schools and families who have found this to be a highly desirable way to learn. And so trying to be sensitive to that and honor their wishes and kind of be true to our mission statement about offering that personalized learning experience, we would recommend that the board approve creating this virtual academy.
And with this approval, we actually don't know how interested the community will still be in this after the vaccines come, and hopefully, we can return back to school in person 100% for everyone who wants it. But we did want to be prepared because we had over 25% of our students that chose that option this year. And we've had feedback from many that it's been working really well for them. So there is a chance either they are homeschool families, maybe in the future, open and rolled-out families that would want to stay because they could participate in extracurriculars and other activities if they were our students, or those that did remote this year that would want to continue to do so. So on that two-page document, we just tried to summarize for you some of the main areas and topics that have come up, and what our response is in terms of like what platforms we'll use, the content synchronous and asynchronous, letting families know they still have to take assessments and do all of the, they'll get report cards and parent-teacher conferences and all of the same things that our in-person kids will have. Staffing will become a big issue once we know how many students are actually interested. Our goal is to make this a budget-neutral move. We're not going to hire additional staff for the virtual academy because we would be repurposing existing staff who are interested. We've had some teachers this year that really, really love doing what they're doing and hope to continue, and some that do not, which is fine. So we'll be advertising for staffing once we have an indication from families in the spring if they're interested or not.
I think at the 9:12 level, a virtual academy provides a lot of flexibility, especially for high school students and scheduling. It opens up time in the schedule for work-based learning experiences, those extracurricular activities and things. So students could be, at the 7:12 level, could be part-time virtual learners. That's a model that's proven to be successful in a number of other school districts.
I read through your handbooks, and I see this as a work in progress. And I know these are things that may need to be discussed, these are things that may need to change, because it's brand-new to everyone. But I agree, it offers a lot of flexibility to the high school. It could also offer some flexibility to middle school if you've got some students that are having health issues or some social issues. So I think it's something we should continue. I think it will probably look a whole lot different in four years than it looks right now.
We've learned a lot. This second semester is even looking a whole lot different than first semester, so...
So with this, COVID wouldn't be an excuse. It would be something that they just chose to do? Is that what it is? Okay. And will there be like a guide as far as a recommendation for them to come back if they're not doing their work, or, I mean, I know how it's working right now, and they are, they have to do work at home. So if the teacher, the virtual teacher sees it's not happening, or they're not, I guess, participating, is it something where the district can come back and say, "You need to come back, it's not working"?
Yeah, there's a provision in each of the handbooks that talks about steps we think that would be necessary if a student isn't achieving. And actually, it would follow a lot of the same steps we would follow for somebody who's attending in person and not achieving either, because unfortunately, those situations happen as well. So, you know, students that are in this program outside of the COVID environment still would be required, if they're of compulsory age, to follow Iowa's compulsory attendance laws and everything like that. A virtual academy doesn't excuse them from those, from those responsibilities, so...
And that's one of the discussions I saw happening in the handbook, is how do we count attendance? And again, I think that's something that as you get into it, will become clearer.
Are there questions from anybody?
I guess a concern I had when reading over it was the repurposing of current staff. So from my estimation is that we didn't plan on adding a bunch of headcount that was already on staff, on payroll.
Currently, we're, we've allocated what our existing staff was in order to accommodate. And, you know, that's what, right now, we're just asking the board for approval to apply for accreditation, because without accreditation, you can't offer it after COVID. And then there's a lot of work that we'll need to do as far as recruitment, solicitation, promoting. It has an opportunity that hasn't existed before unless people wanted to open and roll out to see what kind of numbers and at what levels we have, and then we'll have to take it from there to determine. If it happens to bring in students that otherwise we wouldn't have, then we absolutely would look at possibly increasing staffing in order to accommodate, or maybe we'll need to do that at a minimal level, just dependent on, you know, how things play out in terms of where the numbers are at. But the hopes would be that it would work out, that we can accommodate with existing staff to the extent possible.
And I feel like there will eventually be a blend of virtual and onsite type instruction that will help us accommodate some of our students with special interests, like the young man that just talked about airplanes, students with special needs, even students who are trying to learn languages that maybe we can't offer here because we don't have a full-time teacher that can offer that, but we can get it through virtual. So I think it will give us a way to expand and meet the needs of the community, but it's still new, and we need to start somewhere. And starting from where we're at makes sense, and then moving from there.
This is certainly a business model that, there's a, what is there, like half a dozen school districts in the state that offer virtual, whether it's Clayton Ridge, or Des Moines got approved, Cedar Rapids got approved. And so I think it's a good job by you guys by exploring another business model that can keep students we got, or maybe get a few that we don't have now. And so, you know, good job.
We'd be, we would be the only virtual school that had dual-language programming for anyone that was interested, if we can figure out how to pull that off too. So that's, you know, something I think that would set us apart from other virtual schools too.
If not, may I have a motion to approve the application process for the Marshalltown Virtual Academy for the 21, 22 school year and beyond as presented?
Move for approval.
Second.
Hernandez Miller, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just you tonight.
Going to ask lots of questions tonight.
So, yeah, I'm just likely. So over the past week, we've had U.S. Senator Chuck Grassley visit MHS. He's talked to some of the government classes. This is part of his tour of the 99 counties in Iowa. Government students got to ask questions. He mostly talked about lawmaking and stuff that applied to what he does in the Senate. This past Sunday, we also had a livestream MHS holiday concert. This was a reschedule from December since COVID rates were high. The concert featured the symphonic band, treble and concert choir, show choir, and wind ensemble. Upcoming is, the girls and boys basketball teams both have games in Ankeny this Friday. They will be against Ankeny Centennial and held at their high school, too. The boys swimming will have conference at the Marshalltown IMCA, and wrestling will have a meet this Thursday at MHS versus Ankeny Centennial. And this week is final week, the last week of first semester, so good luck to all the MHS students.
Claudia, one question for real.
Yes.
Who can go to the games now? Like, can all the kids go to games, or...
I think away games, it's, I think it depends on the school and who can go, but home games, you get like two tickets per person, per player.
But if you're not related, you still can't go?
No. Unless you have a ticket.
That's a, that's a CIML or conference rule right now in terms of condition. All the schools are operating that way?
Yeah, so I asked the question because, you know, of course, the governor changed her guidance on that. But I don't know that it's ever been publicly announced what our guidance was for that. And so maybe this is an opportunity for you to do so.
I think as of last week, it's members of the fam...
Immediate family.
Right? So it's, even if it's more than two, as long as they're members of the household.
Yeah, so we can go beyond two if it's immediate health.
Right.
Not extended.
Not extended. That's what I got.
I actually have a question about the music. I actually have a question about the music ensembles and maybe I, I didn't see the performances. How are they practicing? How does that work when they're trying to do the choral practice or the band or, are they in the same room or are they trying to practice remotely?
I'm not exactly sure since I'm not in band, but I'm pretty sure they space themselves out and they are able to practice without masks on.
In the same room then?
Yes.
So smaller ensembles but in the same room. I wondered about that because I thought that's complicated.
Yeah, I think, um, I think they wear both, um, special face masks and they have instrument masks on like the horns and stuff like that. I know in the larger groups, they're using the auditorium and spreading out in the seating there because some of the instruments require greater social distancing than others, so.
Yeah, I would think so with the-
Yeah, there, there are special conditions and provisions that the Iowa High School Music Association made, um, provisions that they made and recommended based on some national studies they did this summer and fall.
I've thought about it a number of times, I hadn't asked anybody.
So on the, um, updated, uh, athletics, uh, guidance coming out of the governor's office, we do have, uh, Janu-, as of January eleventh, the athletics website does have those, uh, listed under their announcements, important links. So that would have been updated on January eleventh, which was-
Last Monday.
Last Monday.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just as a side note, for this Thursday's, uh, wrestling, home wrestling meet, there's gonna be a special recognition of an MHS alum Larry Jackson, class of eighty-one, uh, who is recently-
Anything great, always out in eighty-one.
He was recently inducted into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame for a lifetime achievement award, um, and so they're actually gonna make the physical presentation just preceding the varsity match tonight with a couple representatives of the Iowa chapter of the National Wrestling Hall of Fame. Very cool, um, I believe, uh, Mike Mann, our coach, is a part of that, as is Phil Henning, former wrestling coach, and I think probably Ally Morrison as well.
He was good. Larry Jackson was a good wrestler.
And a real big live stream.
Yep, great.
Dr. Shute, the school calendar for next year?
Okay, so better late than never. We've got a draft of a two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar for the board to, uh, consider. Th- this calendar very closely mirrors the calendar that you would have had presented to you a year ago that had spring break built in. Um, similar to this year's calendar, or at least original calendar, we have a hundred and seventy-seven student contact days, um, which includes, uh, the Friday Parent Teacher Conference days that are built into the schedule. We've got eleven professional development and/or, uh, teacher work days, and that, which includes the contracted non-mandatory workday they have in the fall for extra time they put in over the summer. And then the two teacher comp days, which precede Thanksgiving and usually are embedded in spring break, take us to a hundred and ninety teacher contract days. Uh, what I really, as you may recall, when I presented the calendar options to you last year, we talked about, you know, by accepting one that didn't have spring break and, and of any year not to have spring break, this was a good one, not to have that build in just by chance, um, we said that we would kind of do an alternating thing where we then incorporate spring break the next year so that, you know, for kids and families that take advantage of, um, the spring break time at least every other year, they'd have that kind of opportunity. So what's really nice about this calendar is that, uh, the stars aligned with not only MCC's calendar, but with the state regents as well. So that hasn't happened for some time, so I was really thankful. I, I don't think it was purposeful, but I continue to advocate for that, um, from, uh, Marsh Town Community College, so. Anyway, our intent would be to bring this back, um, at the next meeting for formal approval.
Is the last day of school for kids, is that the second of, first of June or second of June?
It'd be the first of June.
So there'll be, it'd be no school on Monday, Memorial Day, then they go Tuesday and Wednesday, and Wednesday's the last day.
Mm-hmm. That's assuming we don't have snow days and that sort of thing.
Now, it looks like they'd only go Tuesday. Am I reading this wrong?
No, the thirty-first-
Well, that's a Monday, not a Sunday.
Thirty-first of May is a Tuesday.
Those weeks.
Yeah, and had we, you know, had, if we were looking at not having spring break, we would have actually ended before Memorial Day with the regular schedule. Typically, you know, in the years I've been here, we've typically had anywhere from one to three snow days, so.
Well, having at least two days after Memorial Day is important. Then if you add a day or two for your snow days, that's okay, but trying, so that makes sense to me. The thirty-first and the first, it would be coming. And then, who do you, professional development?
The other thing that's always a bit of a debate with calendars, whether, you know, there, there's a general consensus, especially at the younger ages, that starting with a shortened week is preferable, and so it's always, you know, do we do a three-day short or a, a four-day, or I mean, a four-day week or a three-day week? And usually the older the kids, the more they want the fuller week versus the younger kids wanting the shortened week or, or their teachers. And, um, what really kind of led us to wanting to do what Marsh Town's done historically, which is a four-day week, starting on a Tuesday, is with the idea that, um, the block schedule is likely to continue beyond this year at both middle school and high school. It's really advantageous to have four-day, you know, be an alternating block, so it'd be every other day, and be advantageous to have two days for all those classes and those kids versus, uh, some of the classes having two days and some having one had we started on a Wednesday. So four days is advantageous to begin with from that standpoint.
They have a four-day week at the beginning and a two-day week at the end. Let me, I see.
Yeah, it's an odd number of student contact days, so obviously they'll need to work to, you know, arrange or structure things so that that balances out as far as core classes are concerned. But generally, there's some special events or things that happen that would, could fill So that will come back, um, at our next meeting in February.
Any other questions for Dr. Shute on the calendar or comments?
Good job on the sync in us with MCC, Iowa State.
Yeah, that's nice.
I've asked for, I, I asked that question five years, I've been on this schoolwork five times, and I think this is the first time it's been like that, and so.
It is really nice.
Especially when you have kids from all three schools.
You know, the tail that gets wagged by the dog a little bit there, so good job to Kristy Fisher, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Sotters?
Um, I'm here to recommend approval of, uh, the communications audit from the National School Public Relations Association, um, as presented at the December twenty-first meeting. And here, I don't know if that's the correct page. It was page eight on, there it is, yes. So those are the details. And actually, on the agenda item, it is listed as fifteen thousand five. It's actually going to be fourteen thousand five because since I last presented to you, we have officially become INSPIRA members. We had been with INSPIRA, the Iowa School Public Relations Association. That does not come with an INSPIRA membership, so just had to formally, uh, do that before we could get that discount, so.
Okay.
I'm open to any questions you may have.
Adam, what, um, is there a timeline of whence the contract is signed, when they will start, and when they will deliver recommendations?
The timeline, as I understand it, is, uh, from fourteen to sixteen weeks. So, um, the, basically, as soon as, assuming it is approved tonight, um, I would send in the documentation that they would need, our strategic plan, for instance, our current communications plan, uh, and any other documentation that they may request, you know, that, that they would need to set this up. Um, as soon as that's done, then I would be in contact with them about, I, I believe they're, they're going to send two, um, audit experts to work with Dr. Shute and I. Um, but yeah, the, the overall timeline, uh, as I understand, is about fourteen weeks. So we'd be talking about probably potentially being able to have this process finished up well before the next school year.
Having been involved in several miscellaneous marketing strategic plans, which is really what this is, um, they can be very nebulous. So my hope is that we nail them down and then we, as a board, hold you and you accountable to what real measurable deliverables are and real actual timelines are so that the money that we spend on this is not, I guess, kind of what so often happens in marketing strategic plans.
Right.
I, I agree. I actually, one reason I'm so excited for this is because our current strategic plan, I think, it obviously has lots of, lots of good information in it, but it, it, I agree with you, there isn't a whole lot in the way of specific timeline details and specific goals, and so I'm, I believe that this audit will help us form that kind of timeline and that kind of specific plan. Uh, and as you said, that's the purpose of doing it.
Is there any, um, provision as a part of this to obtain board input on what marketing initiatives or strategic direction that, um, you ought to take?
So I don't, I know that we will have debrief sessions. As an example, we'll have debrief sessions after all ten of the, uh, focus group discussions. So that can, we, we can involve board members in that. So the other thing, the key thing is because those, um, those focus group sessions are sort of the central part of this, this audit, school mem-, the only potential people from the school district who would be directly involved in those meetings would be translators, potentially, um, if their help is, is needed and warranted. Um, Dr. Shute, me, board members, none of us would be at those meetings. The goal of that is to get the most honest and clear feedback from the community as possible. Uh, but we would be debriefed, be, uh, of course, based on what, what is said and, um, the conclusions that are, that are concluded.
So they're, they're interviewing parents of students?
Yeah, so we, we have a lot of leeway over who specifically goes into those groups, um, into those ten focus groups. We can focus on, for instance, our migrant population, we could focus on specifically Spanish speakers, we could focus on, uh, of course, you know, more generally, parents.
Social education, gifted and talented.
Sure, right. And we, those are details that, you know, is, again, um, if, if you all approve this tonight, we would have to discuss who exactly we're going to target with these ten focus groups. But we can, we can be specific about who we target.
Okay, so you're looking at, and you've set the number at ten different focus groups already, or you're?
Could you say that again?
Said you've set the number at to have ten focus groups.
That's, that is the number that INSPIRA includes in this audit proposal.
Okay. Okay.
Have you identified a goal, Adam, on like, this is what I want to get out of this thing?
I want to, yes, I actually have, have several goals that I'd like to come out of this. So the first and most important is having a more specific, um, strategic communications and marketing plan than what we currently have. Uh, the goal with that is to set up specific policies regarding communications in the district. We have s-, a, a small number of policies that touch on my position and, and the job duties specifically, but I feel like there's a lot of processes that need to be formalized. There's partnerships that we need to formalize within the district for internal communications purposes. Um, so that's one of the main things I'm excited about, especially at the building level, having building level communications teams, for instance, um, to help get the word out to parents and help build up good word of mouth is one of my big goals coming out of this audit. Um, so just, that would be it in a nutshell, is, is formalizing policies and processes, um, related not just to marketing and branding, but also to internal communications, uh, and communications to parents. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, you answered, you, you answered it.
Okay.
You answered well. If you asked me that question, I'd say, I want to develop a plan that gets more people choosing Marshalltown.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, right.
And that would be it.
Yes.
That's all it takes.
Yes, anything we can do to stem the, the flow of open enrollment out, of course, is very much a specific overarching goal of, of everything that is gonna go into this new plan.
And when I look at things that, that because of our relative size compared to surrounding districts that we can be looking at, music, athletics, dual language, um, maybe extended, expanded work-study type programs with the different industries we have in town, there's a, a lot of ways you can go with this.
Yes. And, and I'm hoping to identify even more and, and maybe specific ways in which we can market those things from the focus groups. That's one of my goals for this, so. Sorry, I haven't looked over here very much. I've been, I've had my head stuck on this side of the swivel.
Well, and I, you know, based on the data that we've, um, shared with the board over the last five years, we have stemmed the tide of open enrollment out, or at least, you know, got it to where it's balanced or slowly, uh, turning the other way, I think, you know, how do we significantly change that trajectory? And, uh, and our, obviously, our community and our youngest parents are the biggest part of that equation because many of those decisions are being made before even sending their kids to school.
And young parents is, again, that's an example of a group of people we could try and target with one of those focus groups, since that's one of our key populations.
Other questions from anybody?
The, sorry, the focus groups, um, do you know who would lead those?
Uh, the, the lead for those would be the two professionals that INSPIRA has-
Okay.
Lead, lead the audit process.
Okay. I guess I'm just thinking, um, language-wise?
Yes, I did ask them specifically about that. They have, the, the answer I got was that they have staff, uh, for Spanish, specifically they have staff who are, uh, competent in Spanish, although they're not trained translators or, that's a whole, that's a different level of education than that requires, I believe. So, um, they, the only, the, the, on our side for the district, uh, they did say it may be necessary, uh, if we can find sta-, and we have lots of staff members, of course, who are fluent Spanish speakers. Or if, you know, if we could find community volunteers, um, on our end as well, um, we, we can, that would support that process. Now, for the, our, our Southeast Asian, I know there's lots and lots of languages within that, uh, segment of our population, so, um, we would have to discuss maybe talking with Embark, uh, and, and other organizations that can support in, in that sense.
And they would, they would suggest the places to hold the focus groups? I guess my, my thing about it, it's working with parents. The experience of working with parents is always meeting them where they're comfortable at.
Yes, yes.
So bringing them to a place where they're out of their comfort zone, that focus group will not, you know, it won't go-
Right, right.
As they should.
And, and make, the, the comfortable factor is important too. That's also why we're, we're not gonna have school sta-, other than, of course, possibly translators, we're not gonna have administrators or, or, uh, anyone there to get the most honest answers we can.
Interesting.
Other questions? And may I have a motion to approve the National School Public Relations Association audit proposal in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Faltis?
Point of clarification, it'd be in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred. So I move to amend the motion to say fourteen thousand five hundred, five and fifteen five. Somebody could second?
Sure. Second, whatever, gotcha.
Aguirre Miller, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Point of information, the amendment passed six-zero to amend it to fourteen-five instead of fifteen-five, so we need to vote now on the fourteen-five.
Man, we got a parliamentarian in the House.
So I move to call to question.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Who, who made the first?
The initial motion was made by Mike.
Mike and Sarah.
And seconded by Sarah. And seconded by Sarah. The amendment was made by Nico and seconded by Mike. Okay. We haven't even gotten to the policy on Robert's Rules of Order.
Nico reviewing that one?
I wasn't this time.
The next item up is the resolution to approve the disposition of the Ford, the two Ford trucks from the public hearing earlier. In accordance with our board policy, because we think these are worth more than $5,000, we have to go through this sale procedure. So we just need to, I'd take a motion to approve the disposition.
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis, Agüeri, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries six to zero. Then we've got two items setting resolutions, resolutions setting public hearings on the high school air conditioning project and on the Anson air conditioning and renovation project. All right, could you just, Ortheran, one of you guys, just kind of give everybody an overview of the process just for reminder's sake?
Sure. So one of the things that we need to do is have a public hearing on whether this project moves forward. So with this resolution, we are setting that public hearing for the February 1st board meeting at 5:00 PM. There will be two separate hearings, one for Anson and one for the high school. And then with that, we are tentatively approving the adoption of the plans and specs and the form of contract. So basically, setting the public hearing for February 1st and giving the public an opportunity to comment on those plans.
On the two projects.
On the two projects.
Questions about any of these things?
This is just to set the hearing for February 1st, correct?
Correct.
February 1st at 5:00, yes.
So do we need a motion for that?
Publish that notice in the newspaper?
Yep, we'll need two separate motions, one for each project.
Correct. Okay.
So I would take a motion for the resolution tentatively approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost for the Marshalltown Community School District High School Air Conditioning Project and setting the time, date, and location for a hearing thereon and further authorizing the notice of seeking competitive bids on said air conditioning project. That hearing to be held at 5:00 PM on February 1st.
So moved.
Seconded.
Agüeri, McGinnis, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries six to zero. And then I would take a motion approving the resolution tentatively approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost for the Marshalltown Community School District Anson Elementary Air Conditioning Remodeling Project and setting the time, date, and location for a hearing thereon and further authorizing the notice of seeking competitive bids on said air conditioning remodeling project. That public hearing would be held February 1st at 5:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Miller Hernandez, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries six to zero.
Hi. Over the next few months, we'll be talking about E-Rate. So I just got a couple 470s, and that means that I pretty much told the federal government that I'll be applying to get reimbursed for a lot of our networking equipment. So our reimbursement rate is 90%, which means that with the cost of some of these things, I don't technically have to do an RFP. However, for my ability to evaluate and to get some things on the bids that I really would like, I chose to go out for RFP. Our internet service provider, MediaCom, our contract is up this year, June of 2021. So we are going out for RFP to see if there are any bids that with a rubric could come out ahead of MediaCom. So I'm here to request permission to go out for RFP.
What's RFP?
Oh, it's a request for proposal. So I just want proposals from other buildings, or from other companies.
Move for approval.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Second.
Miller Faltis, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries six to zero. Okay, now we are on to policies.
Just because Bee's not here is not why we front-loaded a lot of additional policies tonight, but you'll find out more later as to why we needed to add some. So the first readings, there were, there's a policy yet on the docket that Mr. Miller presented, and then a couple policies that I presented as far as 204.5 organizational meeting, 201 R1 organizational meeting procedures. Let me step back. Not 204.5, 210.1 annual meeting, 201 R1 organizational meeting procedures, and 507.8 special health services. Those were all amended during the review phase at the last meeting, and I would recommend approval and waive the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Miller, Agüeri, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
And then 204.5 organizational meeting, we wound up actually combining that with another policy. So we're asking for the board to approve the deletion of that policy.
So moved. Second.
McGinnis, Faltis, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's deleted. Karina, do you want to cover yours here for the initial review?
For 204.8 Rules of Order, we recommend to amend the policy and adopt the IASB sample policy language. Because the board will still follow the Robert's Rule of Order. Also need to renumber to 210.7.
So that one, are there questions for Karina on that one? That we'll have to come back. About 205.1?
205.1, we recommend amending the policy to adopt also the IASB sample policy option for the language.
Any questions for Karina on that one? That one will come back as well. And then I assume the rest of these, are you taking, Dr. Schutte?
Yeah, I'm going to jump down to 312.3 E1 fringe benefit for administrators supervisors. Last year, as you approved this year's agreements, we had added Martin Luther King Day as a holiday, as it was for other 12-month employees, and we did not add or adjust that to the policy on fringe benefits for administrators supervisors. So we're, this simply adds that, and we will bring that back for, at the next meeting for approval. And then 409.2 employee lease of absence, when we reviewed and amended this with IASB language, we did not pick up that it included a provision that's not normally, a provision in our, does not exist in our contracts, so we're recommending striking or close friend for the bereavement leave. And 507.2 administration of medication to students, and 507.2 R administration of medication to students. We had Stacy Tool Crawford review the recommended language from the Iowa Association of School Boards. She's made adjustments based on their recommendations as well as our current practices. Actually, 507.2 would be the amended policy, and we're combining the regulation into that policy. So the recommendation would be to bring 507.2 back at the next meeting for approved amendment, and 507.2R, we're recommending the deletion of that policy.
Any questions for Dr. Schutte on any of those items?
I've asked Mr. Kretzinger to speak to most of the other changes related to student conduct and special education, as many of these recommended amendments are actually a point of law now with the new laws that are being enacted. So...
Before we do that, would you speak to 210.7 R1, that regulation?
Oh, Rules of Order? Yeah, that's actually Karina's. Did we already cover that or not?
Well, she covered the policy. I assume that this is just the regulation under that.
Oh, okay.
There are some changes to it. I assume that'll have, that'll come back to be it.
Yeah, again, I think with both the policy and regulation, we incorporated IASB language to be more informative than what our existing policies were.
Okay. Mr. Kretzinger?
Where would you like me to start?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just to give everyone a little context here, during the last legislative session, the legislators came together to talk about different parts of student behavior. Many of us heard about the room clear legislation, which now is about safe students, safe classrooms, as well as then there's always been provisions around what's called Chapter 103, which is the safety use of restraint, seclusion, and confinement for kids. With the changes they made, they told us about winter break time, that as of tomorrow, new rules and policies have to be in place to align with what they put in legislative session. So that's really what we're looking at here, are all changes to policies based on the new rules put in front of us. In 503.6, they are talking about now what is expected or documentation when it comes to the use of restraint or seclusion for students who are exhibiting unsafe behaviors. Everything in here is new to us. Really, some of the highlights here is defining what is considered reasonable and necessary force, talking about what we need to do to try to be preventive, and then prior to using any kind of physical restraint or seclusion, the training requirements and expectations for employees of the district, as well as employees who work within our walls, even if they're not our own staff. So for instance, we have people who come in from mental health agencies that work with kids who would also be required to have the same level of training and support.
Questions for Mr. Kretzinger on 503.6?
Do we have a plan for getting this training to people during the staff development days, or what?
Yes. Actually, our certified staff are working through that currently. And then on our professional development day, our educators will be working through the training as well. There's a foundational level that's available online, and so that's where we're beginning.
Are all of these changes mandated by new code? None of these changes are stuff that our district just wanted to put in there. This is all mandated by code.
This is all mandated by code.
This is the exact same verbiage that is being passed down to us that other districts are using.
I can't speak to other districts. The verbiage here is really what we've taken off the example policies given to us by IASB.
It's very similar to the code. I looked up the code. I think it's, at least in intent, very similar.
Yeah, IASB's attorneys would have crafted the language for these policies.
We didn't add any language to the policy that they gave us.
I just have reservations on this because it's, it's open to interpretation, obviously, right? And that's, we can't have a bullet point of do X in case Y or Z. But some of the bullet points that stood out to me is when they talk about, you know, trying to prevent damage to monetary value, you know, property or non-monetary value. So it's almost like a, you know, stand your ground, you know, and what's threatening to you, it might be different than what's threatening to me or disruptive. And it's just, it's a lot of gray that I feel that our, our staff is going to need some clarity on. How we present that and how we do that, whether those are real-life case studies, or here's A, here's B, here's C, I don't know. But there's a lot of gray there that I'm not comfortable with.
Some of the training that they're taking, if it's the same one that I went through, they're really working now on teaching staff how to resolve these issues without escalating the kids, without, a lot of times, staff would get into power struggles, and that would cause these situations to escalate. So they're working, really working on teaching staff how to approach students in a way that's less likely to cause the escalation. That's a major part of this training. And as someone who, and I do believe in at least one of these places, when they talk about monetary damage, it has to be significant monetary damage. You don't restrain a child for breaking a pencil, but you might restrain a child who's getting ready to throw a chair into a television, or throw a computer across the room. Does that make sense? So, and there's always going to be a gray area, and it seems like in education, we really struggle to find that balance. But there is a place where it says specifically, you don't restrain children just for compliance. If a child just chooses not to do his work, he chooses not to do his work. That's no longer considered a reasonable reason to restrain him. But if he's a danger to other students, he's throwing things across the room, he's making it impossible to teach, then you might need to remove him from the classroom. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I think that's where they're coming from here. But you're right, in that teachers really do need, and prayer professionals, need to be taught how to approach students in a way that does not cause these disruptions to escalate. So is there a name to this training? Is there a name to this training? Is it de-escalation, or what is?
There are a variety of names. The foundational one we're talking about is through the AAPD online system, and it's called Chapter 103 De-escalation Revision 2021.
Is this only being offered online? They're not doing a person?
Currently, yes.
Okay.
There is an expectation that as employees complete this, there's a certificate of completion at the end that must be kept.
Okay. I just feel like this is something that requires practice. I'm not sure how that would work online.
There are some additional things that the district will be doing to make sure employees are, feel comfortable with what we expect them to do.
Okay.
And we have a long history in the past of providing such training, correct?
Yes, we do. Yes. Our training has been meeting these standards for some time now. We've just updated the policy to match what the state is expecting us to do. And if you look at 503.6 R1, this is just an outline of the expectations around the documentation that goes along with this. We have to make sure that physical restraint and seclusion will only be used by employees who have been trained in accordance with 503.6. We have to make sure that as soon as the situation is under control or within an hour, the school will attempt to contact the parents the school will attempt to contact the parent or guardian. We need to make sure that we're only using seclusion or physical restraint as long as necessary. We need to make sure that we are being sensitive to the child's potential needs based on their physical requirements, so we can't hold them any longer than necessary. And if they need to do things like use bathroom or if they need their hands for communication, we need to allow them to be able to do that. And I won't read them all to you because there are lots of bullet points, but.
Yeah.
And again, this is just coming off the IASB's sample policy based on the new legislative expectations.
One of the things that came up during my walkarounds as I was running for the board, the reason this went to the legislature is it had swung so far in the direction of never restraining a child that legislators were being told of classrooms where the entire class was asked to leave as one child threw tables across the room, threw chairs across the room, screamed and yelled profanities. These things don't happen often, but in our school system, they were happening in one classroom in the entire district, but that reputation went way beyond that classroom. It doesn't have to happen often for this to go out to the community that, you know, our schools are out of control, our students are out of control, children can't learn. You only have to have three or four kindergartners terrified to go to school because of what they're hearing in the hallways for word to get out to the community. So yes, it's a public relations issue. Also, the poor children in that classroom, what are they learning? If they're being pulled out of the classroom two or three times a day during these temper tantrums? So, and it wasn't just our school system. This was happening nationwide, and that's why this went to the state legislature. It was a lot of parents complaining about a national problem. And it's really difficult to find that balance, as you know, Matt.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Hartman, where would you like me to go now?
Do you, have you covered all of the, I mean, there's some exhibits there that look like, there are letters and those sorts of things?
E1, E2, E3.
Yeah, we have three exhibits of, there's documentation we need to keep ourselves as well as documentation for families. And so those are exhibits of what that needs to look like. And we are already preparing to get those out to our staff members and give them information so they can use them effectively.
So relative to the policies that Matt has introduced, typically with changes in policy or new policies that are required by law, you can waive, you can simply approve because we don't really have an option whether or not to approve or disapprove the law. Similar to like when we make minor changes that don't really affect the, you know, if it's a title or a reference or grammatical error or something like that. So I would recommend that on these policies, regulations, and exhibit that the board review and approve waiving a first and second reading.
These are mandatory policies.
Yep.
But I think what you said, Matt, is we have to have these policies in place tomorrow?
The, yes, the 20th is the deadline that they put for implementation of the new legislative standards. We learned about that in mid-December.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions for, for Mr. Kretzinger?
I don't know if there's more discussion, if it's mandated by law, but it might not hurt to get the boards more information about this training for de-escalation and restraint, not go through the whole training, but more explain what it's about. You know, what types of things you're teaching the teachers, what types of things you're teaching the paras? Because I can understand the concern that people have.
We can have that as a future agenda item, yeah.
So can I have a motion to adopt 503.6, 503.6R1, 503.6E1, 503.6E2, 503.6E3, and waive the second reading?
Same.
Second.
Faltis, Agüeri, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no. They're adopted.
I think we have one other policy, 604.1.
Yep.
On online courses. And so Dr. Stevenson stepped out, but she took a look at the IASB policy in conjunction with our policy and has made these recommended adjustments. And this would come back for a first reading at the next meeting.
Did we cover the 503.1? And the 503.5? Did I just miss that?
No, we didn't. You're right.
Matt, we may need you back. 503.
Come on back.
503.5, physical restraint and punishment, corporal punishment. 503.1R1 disciplinary procedures and/or penalties. We made amendments in those policies based on IASB from what we had in place, evidently.
Yes, they changed some of the definitions.
Questions for Mr. Kretzinger on 503.1, 503.1R1 or 503.5? Those are all amendments, so they will come back the next meeting.
Were those, are those particular changes predicated by the law?
Yes. We needed to make sure that our prior policies matched up to the new expectations as well as some of the expectations and language they used.
So do those also then need to be in place?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So then we need a motion to amend 503.1, 503.1R1, and 503.5 and waive the second reading.
I guess I have a question looking at this again. If a student is removed from the classroom, but instead of being sent to the principal, sent to a counselor or to a behavior strategist, that's not counted as removal?
No, they've been very particular. It's to the principal's office that counts as a removal.
Interesting. I'll have to think on that.
Is there a motion to amend these policies?
So moved.
Second.
Agüeri, Hernandez, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Kretzinger.
We promise to have many fewer policies at the next.
You keep saying this.
Anything of note?
Hello again. Well, other than we have an exciting new communications audit coming, I believe Dr. Schuie mentioned the Larry Jackson special recognition that's coming up later this week. So, and that will be live streamed, so you'll be able to watch online as well as in person if you choose to be there. Other than that, we are, I'm excited to say we're continuing to see great progress in the STEM Best Grant Video Production Class. We have finalists coming up for them for the first semester, as Mrs. Frohwein and I discussed earlier today. So we're excited. It's, it's building into a good team. We've already got some students who have gotten some experience out there running the camera for live events, so just wanted to share that short update. Is there any questions for me? All right.
Thanks. We've got reminders. Remember, we've got a work session next Monday, the 25th. The CYAC Committee will be meeting next at the end of March. The LAU Committee will be meeting in May. There's an Auditorium Foundation meeting in April. And Jan has one policy to review for next meeting.
I will mention that Mr. Agüeri graciously accepted the invitation to fill in for Bob Untied on the Auditorium Foundation, well, actually, BR rep on the Cultural Alliance, the Marshall County Cultural and Arts Alliance, which they'll have a few meetings in the coming months to discuss that public art project. So Jackie Wyant, Nico, and Todd Goulding will represent us there.
Just a correction on the LAU Committee. It's Nico now instead of me.
Okay. Okay. I thought I read it wrong or had done, but it's, I got you.
No, you didn't read it.
Okay.
I was just looking at it.
So Nico and Jan?
Yep, Nico and Jan.
I'm also on the CYAC Committee.
Yep.
With Karina.
Committee reports, the Finance Committee met. Mike, did we talk about anything besides the, that Families First coronavirus extension?
That's what I remember.
That was, okay. So we covered that already. The Benefits Advisory Committee met that same day. And my recollection is we just started a conversation about insurance for next year. Is that fair, Mike? CYAC Committee met last week. Did anybody attend?
We both did.
Tell us what happened.
We broke up into seven different groups to kind of discuss the pillars that we're trying to work on. I broke up with, broke into a group with Kyle Young, president, principal at Lennon Hand. And we had a positive perspective mindset is what that was. And that ended up being much more difficult than what either one of us thought about doing. And in each one of the breakout sessions, we wanted to look at three things. How it looked, how it felt, and how it sounded, based off of our pillar that we were trying to delve into. We're trying to determine if we want to have the bullet points less than seven, looking at maybe four or five rather than seven, and combining where we need to there.
We covered it.
Okay. Well, what have we done tonight for kids?
We approved to petition for accreditation with our Virtual Academy. I think that is something that's very exciting. I think even without the pandemic, I think that's something that many districts, states, nations would be looking into. And knowing that we're going to pursue that is something that's exciting, something new. Looking forward to that.
We've started the discussion that the legislature has been working on by approving these, these new board policies, recognizing this as a work in progress, but teaching our staff how to work with these students that struggle emotionally and keep them as much as we can in school while providing a safe learning environment for their peers.
I don't have a quote for the night, so.
Going a step closer to providing a better learning environment for all students that attend Marshalltown High School with their kind of thing, and improving the quality of learning environment at Ainsley.
Well, we have gotten through the business part of the meeting in time for the virtual advocacy training sponsored by IASB. So we've got five minutes. We can just sort of chill out and relax, guys.
... in our state tax revenue. I'm going to talk about the Revenue Estimating Conference and kind of their thoughts on this. But really, there is a lot of uncertainty. You know, how are we going to come out of this recession? How are we going to come, you know, how is this going to impact our economy in the long term? Including fiscal year '22 and also fiscal year 2023. Our federal stimulus dollars have really been helping us, not only as a state, but as a nation as a whole. It's really kind of helping drive, especially the state revenue, tax revenue, was really kind of helped bolster that up. Revenue Estimating Conference, they really play a very important role in the whole budget process, and I will talk about them more. And then it's also important to note that the legislature does have a limit on their expenditures. They can only spend or appropriate 99% of the anticipated general fund tax revenue that's available in the state. And, you know, that's in our constitution, and the legislature falls at very close with it. And the constitution requires that we have a balanced budget, and we always meet that on an annual basis. So this graphic just shows our overall state general fund tax revenue, net revenues. The blue line here shows what that 12-month running total is. And the thing I would point out here is you can go back to the last recessionary period back in about 10 or 11 years ago. You can see we did have a pretty strong drop in our overall tax revenues. And then since that time, we've had pretty steady growth for about 11 years. Now, the COVID thing back in March, you can see we did have a sharp peak line. But since that time, we have rebounded. We're still below our, you know, pre-recession peak, but we are starting to bounce back. The red areas basically represent the change impact revenue, 12-month change. And again, take a look at the recession, you can see it was a pretty big drop. This COVID impact, it has been negative, but not nearly as bad as that past recessionary period back about 11 years ago. Well, yes, we've had a slight recovery, but we're still down overall. And what is going to be the impact in the upcoming months? I mean, that's really kind of the question, how are we going to come out of this recession? Let's look at that. So I talked about the Revenue Estimating Conference really playing an important role. And I think it's important you understand what they do and their importance. So they're a three-member panel. And here's a picture of them. We have Holly Lyons. She represents a legislative branch, and she, she works for the Nonpartisan Legislative Services Agency. And interesting, Holly used to be my boss when I worked for the legislature. The person in the middle looks like he's really having a headache, and that's Dave Roder. And he's actually the Department of Management Director, and he's retiring at the end of this month. And I can't say enough good things about him. He's really, he understands the state budget probably better than anybody. So he will be missed. He is retiring at the end of the month, but he has served on this committee for about 10 years. And then the last person here is David Underwood. He's a retired businessman from the recent city area. And he's been, he's agreed to by the other two people that are on the panel. And he's actually been on the REC for probably close to 20 years. So they're required to meet three times a year. Usually they meet in October, they are required to meet in December, and then they also usually meet in March. Now, it's interesting, last year, they actually met four times. And again, that was all COVID-related. They actually added a meeting in May to revise their March estimates. And it's interesting to note that the May meeting when they met, that was the revenue amount that the legislature basically had to use when they finished up the budget for fiscal year 2021. So the way it usually works is the December estimates are important because they're used for the governor's budget recommendation in January. And that's what happened. So the REC met last month, they provided their estimates. And when the governor presented her budget here last week, she was using those REC estimates that they made back in December. And again, the legislature's been running the draft from the budget. They're also going to be restricted to use the REC estimates. And it's important to note too, when they meet in March, if they actually lower their estimates from the December amount, then that means that the legislature has to work off of those lower projections. So they would have less funds to use when they're appropriating the budget for fiscal year 2022. However, if they increase their estimates in March or they hold them about the same, then they're still, the legislature's still bound by that December REC estimate. So this is kind of historically how our net tax revenues have grown over time. You can kind of see the percentages that do bounce around quite a bit. They are impacted by any tax law changes as well. I think that's important to note out. But basically, I would say over, over this period of time, the overall average is probably going to be in the area of about 4%. And you can kind of see the impact we've had, this goes all the way back to fiscal year 2000. So you remember in the early 2000s, we went through a recession, that did have a pretty negative impact on our overall tax revenue growth. And then we had the recession again about 10 or 11 years ago. Again, it's a pretty significant decrease in our overall tax revenues on an annual basis. So when we go over here to the end here, on the far right side, basically, this is what the December REC estimates were for fiscal year 2021, which is the current year that we're in. They actually projected a slight increase, 0.5%, and that equates to an increase of about $38 million compared to fiscal year 2020. And then for fiscal year 2022, the REC felt that we were hopefully going to come out of this recession and kind of start to bounce back to our normal growth in revenues, although it was still pretty conservative, and there was a lot of uncertainty. But what they projected for fiscal year 2022 is a 3.7% growth. And this is the one that's important, because this is what the legislature is going to be working with when they're appropriating money for fiscal year 2022. When you take a look at that, that means we have just under about $300 million of new tax revenue that would be available to the legislature. So this is kind of what the legislature will be facing when they're working on the budget for fiscal year 2022. I think this is, this has got a lot of information on this, and what this does is it shows our overall general fund tax revenues, which is reflected in the green bars versus what the legislature or the governor's recommending for appropriations. And you can see, the first one here on the far left-hand side, that reflects fiscal year 2020, which is a year that we just finished. And you can see, so the darker portion of this green bar reflects our ongoing tax revenues. That's without any surplus. And then on top of that lighter green shade would be our general fund surplus carry board. So the thing I'd like to point out here on all these, on all these years, is, you know, the legislature really wants to make sure that they have, they appropriate less than we actually have for ongoing expenditures. They want to make sure those ongoing expenditures or appropriations are less than the ongoing revenues. And you can kind of see that they've done that. And then for the projection for fiscal year 2021, which is the year that we're currently in, you can see the gap there, so we do, we do meet that goal based on the REC estimates. And then this last one over here on the right-hand side represents fiscal year 2022, based on the governor's budget recommendation. Again, you can see that the appropriation amount is below the solid green line, which is our ongoing general fund revenue. The thing I would point out here is, you know, when we take a look at this gap, you know, that, that's displayed right here, that's $139 million. So in essence, you know, when we take a look at this based on the governor's recommendation, she could say she left about $139 million on the table. So that, that money could have been appropriated, however, she did leave a little bit of a gap there. So another thing that I think is really important is our reserve funds are very healthy. And you can see at the end of fiscal year 2020, they were pretty close to the statutory max, we were just under by $6 million. But the projections for the current year fiscal year 2021, we are at the max, and that amount is $783, $783 million. And then the projections for fiscal year 22, which is the governor's recommendation, again, are going to be over $800 million. So the important thing to know is, this reflects about 10% of our overall estimated general fund tax revenues that are coming in, and, you know, the legislature, you know, has been very hesitant to spend these, these funds at all. And one of the reasons are because these are one-time monies. So once we use them, once we spend them, they're gone. We kind of have to build them back up through our general fund. So will the, will the legislature use these one-time monies, these reserve funds, to help fund any type of priorities? Potentially, only if they're one-time in nature, and I think that's really important to point out. They're not going to use these reserve funds to help pay for anything that's going to be an ongoing expense or an ongoing appropriation. So that's something you have to keep in mind. So another fund that's kind of resulted of, out of, you know, general fund surplus, so this, they put this in place a few years ago, is our taxpayer relief fund. And you can see, really, this is kind of a, a result of the amounts that are generated by the REC underestimating tax revenues. And additionally, it will only grow if our reserve funds are full. So this used to be capped at $60 million, but they removed that cap a couple of years ago. And so you can see for fiscal year 20, the amount stood at $74 million. Fiscal year 2021, it's estimated at $90 million, and then we have a pretty significant increase for fiscal year 2022. So again, these funds are restricted, they have to be used for some type of tax relief. And another thing is, these are also one-time in nature. So again, the legislature's not going to use these funds for any ongoing expenditures or ongoing appropriations. However, you know, there are potentially some uses for this in the, in the area of school aid, where they could maybe help fund some things that are one-time in nature that would also help provide some type of property tax. So just to kind of recap on, on the overall state budget, we really have a lot of uncertainty. You know, what's going to happen with the economy as we come out of the recession and the end of COVID, hopefully? How's that going to have an impact on our overall state tax revenues? Are we going to continue to see federal stimulus dollars that are, that are helping us out? Those are questions. The REC, you know, when they come back in March, what are their estimates going to be? You know, what's the tax revenue going to be looking like? What's the trend going to look like? Are they going to increase their overall estimates? Hopefully, they do. But if they reduce their estimates, well, that's going to put a squeeze on our overall state budget, and the legislature will have less funds to work with. Obviously, we've heard quite a bit about tax cuts. You know, if they implement any type of tax cuts, that is also going to have a negative impact on our overall tax revenues. That makes less funds available to help provide funding for the state budget. But it is important to note that our state revenues, our state reserve funds are full, and the taxpayer relief fund is, is growing. So how's this all going to impact school aid funding? So I always like to kind of recap what happened, you know, last session when I do these. So, you know, last year, again, we've got to go back a year, the governor recommended 2.5% supplemental state aid for fiscal year 2021. But remember, the legislature came in a little bit lower than that, they actually set the rate at 2.3%. But I think it's also important to note, there was a lot of discussion after the legislative session, that, you know, they've actually set that rate before they broke, before, after the COVID had struck. And there were a lot of rumors that they were going to make some type of state aid reduction. Well, that never didn't happen, and that's important to note. They, they held firm under commitment to that 2.3%, which I think was really good. Last year, they extended this SSA property tax relief provision, they've done, they've had that in place since fiscal year 2014. And what that does is basically, it increases the cost of state aid for school, school aid. However, it doesn't provide any additional new dollars for school districts, it's just pure property tax relief. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. The legislature did address the equity funding, they added $10 to the district cost per pupil amount to kind of reduce that difference between the district cost per pupil amounts across the state. And then they also increased the transportation equity, they increased it by about $7.7 million for a total appropriation of about 20, almost $27 million. And then they also maintained that area education agency reduction of an additional $15 million, that's been in place for quite a few years now. But basically, this whole package, when we talked about last year, this cost just under $100 million. For the 2.3%, the extension of the property tax relief, all the equity fund, the funding, and the reduction in the AEA, you package that all together, it was just under $100 million increase in, in state aid for fiscal year 2021. So what's in store for this session? Well, hopefully supplemental state aid. That should be one of the first things that they work on, especially when you talk about a budget impact. What's that percentage going to be for supplemental state aid? Another question that's come up is, what enrollments are they going to use? I mean, a lot of school districts saw a huge decrease in their enrollments this last fall, and that really plays a big impact on, you know, first of all, the school district budgets, but also the cost of state aid to the state. So that's something else that the legislature's probably going to be taking a look at. Also, they're going to have, they have to decide this on an annual basis of whether or not they want to extend that property tax relief provision. So that's something else that's going to be on, on the table. Equity funding, are they going to work on continuing to close that per pupil gap? And if so, what's that per pupil amount going to be? Transportation funding, it seems to me this is kind of decided, because this is now a standing appropriation, however, it does grow by whatever supplemental state aid is. So that's something else that we'll have to keep an eye on. Will the legislature come up with some additional COVID relief? Maybe for the use of those one-time monies they have through the reserve funds or for that taxpayer relief fund? It could tap those to help school districts in the area of COVID. Another issue that's kind of on the table, I think, is, school districts saw a pretty large decrease in their overall preschool program enrollment, and that's going to have an impact on next year's, on the fiscal year 22 budget. But we don't really have a budget guarantee provision for the preschool program. However, the legislature might want to take a look at that, and to help these school districts, if enrollments do bounce back next fall, they will need the funding for that to help provide the education for those preschool students. And then the last thing is, how do these federal funds come into play? You know, I think this latest round of ESIR funds was in the area of $344 million. And what, that is a significant amount of money, there's no doubt about it. But I think it's also important to note that that's one-time money, and that the use is very restricted. So yes, that's going to be a big help, but, you know, is that going to help cover the cost of salaries moving forward?
Sean?
Yes.
We do have a question, and it's about the reserves. The reserve, you know, the question is, you talked about, could we use some of those reserves? And the question is, is there any kind of limitation on the amount of money that can be in the reserves? And then I follow that along with, and if they hit those limitations, what happens to the excess money?
That's a good question. So there is a limitation, it's, it's 10, the, the, it's two, it's two, two reserve funds, the economic emergency fund and the cash reserve fund. And they're basically, when you combine those two, they reflect 10%, they're capped at 10% of our overall net general fund revenue. So there is a cap on place, and once they're full, what happens next is, any excess funds, based on a formula, might flow back into that taxpayer relief fund, and that's why we saw such a big increase in that estimate for fiscal year 2022. And then after that, that calculation is made, then any excess funds after that flow back into the general fund and become part of that general fund surplus carry board. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, but on the tax relief fund, is there a limit on that?
There used to be a limit of, of $60 million, but they, they removed that limit, and now it's formula-based, and it, it's kind of complicated, because it's based on the difference between what we actually got in tax revenue versus what the REC had originally estimated. So there, it is a cap.
And that's why it can grow so much.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay, so, next slide. So we talked about the enrollments. I put this slide in here because I think it's really interesting. So the blue lines reflect actual enrollments, and it goes back about 10 years. The thing I would point out here is this is a statewide total. So in total, you can see our enrollments have gone up pretty significantly over the past 10 years. And in the fall of 2019, we were at just over 490,000 students. And what I'd also like to point out are the red lines here. So those are the Department of Education's enrollment projections that they have put in place. Now, they did these, I think, last March, before we knew what was going to happen with the enrollments this last fall. So again, you take a look at this, you know, when we were running school aid models, we were projecting about a 2,000 increase in our enrollments for this last fall. That didn't happen. We lost a lot of enrollments. You know, it was a parent choice to hold their kindergarten student back, or to send students maybe to homeschool, but basically what happened is, we had a decrease of almost 6,000 students this past fall. And that's a huge amount, and 2/3 of the school districts across the state did see an enrollment decline. So this is the enrollment that they're going to be using, unless there's a law change, this is what the enrollment figure that we're going to be using for supplemental state aid for fiscal year 2022. Now, that has a very significant impact on the overall amount of state aid. Usually, you know, you can kind of think it's kind of a wash, if we have no change in enrollment, we had 0% supplemental state aid, roughly, the state cost would be about zero. So think about last year, our, our SSA rate was 2.3%, the cost of state aid was about $90 million. So this year, using these enrollments, the governor recommended 2.5% supplemental state aid, but that cost is only $20 million. And a lot of that has to do with the decrease in our enrollments. So one of the things that this has been talked about is using some type of alternative enrollment, and the thing that I, I heard was that it would be the greater of the district's last two years' enrollments. And that's what this green line represents. So you can kind of see, that's a little bit above what we had originally projected for enrollments, or what the Department of Ed had projected. And the thing to point out here is, if the legislature would use that enrollment, that's going to increase the cost of state aid by about $60 million over the current enrollment method. So for instance, at 2.5%, using the governor's recommendation and these alternative enrollments, the cost of school aid would actually increase by $80 million. So that's important to note. You know, that I think that's being discussed, I'm not sure if it will gain any traction or not, but that is something that is out there potentially.
Hey Sean, what's the best way to approach it, of course, for the best benefit for schools? Is it to really be talking about a percentage, or is it really to be talking about overall dollars? Or is it really trying to be talking about what gets embedded in the formula so that you have it in future years?
Yeah, I think the best way is really to talk about the SSA percent of growth rate. And the reason I say that, because that's building on the base. You know, you get, the higher you can get it for an SSA rate, that's going to help you in, in the future, no matter what's happening with your enrollment, because that's going to drive the per pupil funding amount, so.
You know, and the governor's talking about 20 million, when in the past, 20 million is quite low compared to what we've seen in terms of percentage, in, not percentage, in terms of actual dollar increase from when you, then. How, how much do you think she's kind of wedded to that 20 million? Do you think there's some negotiation room?
Well, I think there's always negotiation room. You know, I, I don't, I don't know specifically. We'll kind of talk a little bit more about that.
Okay.
Later on, too. But yeah, I mean, that's a good question. You know, it's a legislature is the one that makes a decision on what supplemental state aid is, you know, they're the ones that approve it and send it to the governor, the governor's recommendation, it just kind of gets the discussion started. So yeah, so this kind of gets into this a little bit more, too, is, you can, you can see the supplemental state aid's 8% of growth rates over the past few years. And you can, when I first started working for the legislature, which was in the early 2000s, you know, basically, it was almost 4% every year. And then more, our more recent years, you can see the rates have been much lower than that. We've had one year, you know, where the Senate and the House couldn't come to an agreement, and the rate defaulted to zero. We had quite a few years right around 1%. Last year, we had 2.3%. And the governor's actually recommending 2.5% for both fiscal year 22 and for fiscal year 2023. And then down below shows what that governor's recommendation is. So this top line shows what the, the cost, the state aid cost is at 2.5%. So this is where you mentioned Patty, the governor, at 2.5%, but the, the cost is only $20 million. About that last year, the governor recommended 2.5% and the cost was in the area of $100 million. So again, the result is because of the big enrollment increase that we had. Now, if enrollments bounce back for fiscal year, this next fall, that's going to have an impact on fiscal year 2023 budget, where the state cost could increase significantly. But the one thing I would point out is, you know, we talk about the $90 million that, you know, that we've had, basically, the school aid package the last couple of years, well, that kind of fits in that 4% range using these enrollments. So, and remember, you know, I said the governor basically left $130 million on the table from her budget recommendation. So to me, you know, potentially, I think this could fit into the state budget, especially as the REC estimates stand right now. But really, this is going to be up to the legislature to decide. So, you know, if we look at 3%, the cost of that state aid increase is going to be about $43 million. So hopefully, the legislature will come in at a rate higher than 2.5%, just not sure if they will or not. But this gives you some good information on what that cost is, a school aid would be at a different percentage. And keep in mind, again, too, if the legislature would use those, prior, the, the higher of the two, last two years' enrollments, increase these amounts by about $60 million, because that's, that's how much additional state aid that would take up to fund that. Because that's, that's how much additional state aid that would take up to fund that.
Sean, would that sixty million be then um, embedded in the formula and then help us in the future? Or is it more of a kind of a, a one-time thing?
So the way, it, well, that, yeah, that's a good question. So really, I mean, if we could get more, a higher supplemental state aid rate at, at these levels using the current enrollments, that's going to carry forward more into the future. So, you know, say for instance, you know, we could afford almost four percent. You know, you look at that difference, it's seventy million dollars. So if we used our current enrollments and the legislature was willing to fund, you know, the eighty million, we could have a rate that's almost four percent. And that per pupil growth carries into the future. Whereas if they use the, 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 uh, alternative method on enrollments, we're only going to get maybe two-point-five percent. So we'd have less of a per pupil funding amount going into the future. Does that make sense, Patty? Okay. So I think this is important too, because this is that property tax relief piece that's now become part of the school aid formula. It's called a property tax replacement payment. Um, the cost of this through fiscal year twenty-twenty-one now is seventy-five million dollars. Um, and it's important to note that this is not new money for school districts. This is just pure property tax relief. And what it does is it increases the cost of state aid without providing school districts any additional money. So it used to be prior to fiscal year twenty-fourteen, when the legislature would set supplemental state aid, a portion of that per pupil increase would be funded through property taxes. Well, they've eliminated that now. And the governor did recommend extending that through fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. So you can kind of see the cost of, of, of this, based on the governor's recommendation, is going to be about an additional twelve million dollars. So it would cost about almost eighty-seven million dollars. And a kind of a general rule thumb on this is for each one percent of supplemental state aid, the cost of this is about an additional five million dollars. So just, let's just say the legislature would set the rate at four percent, uh, the cost of this provision would be near twenty million dollars. And again, that's a lot of money, but it's not new money for school districts. It's just pure property tax. Um, equity funding legislation, um, this has gained some traction the past through legislative sessions. The first one is that equalization of the district cost per pupil. Um, the legislature's actually addressed this. Uh, they reduced that difference uh, between the district cost per pupil of a hundred seventy-five dollars. They decreased that by twenty dollars over the past three years. And now that the difference between the lowest and the highest is a hundred fifty-five dollars. And again, kind of a general rule thumb is, you know, if they add five dollars to the state cost per pupil to make that difference, that costs an additional two-point-eight million dollars of state dollars. So they would do a ten-dollar increase in that, then this district cost per pupil equalization, that's going to cost roughly about five-point-sixty. Governor did not address this in her budget, that it's not currently in there. Transportation aid, this is now a standing appropriation, which means it's in Iowa code. It's going to happen every year unless the legislature decides they don't want to fund it. But it also increases by whatever the supplemental state aid rate is. Um, and really, the, the goal of this is to provide um, some transportation relief, some additional state dollars for the districts that have the highest overall transportation cost per pupil. Um, all districts received funding from this last year because we had a little bit of a flow-through that kind of carried over to all school districts. Uh, and I think it's important to note too that, you know, the aid amount's going to vary by district each year. So even though the appropriation amount might be growing over time, a, a district might receive less because it's the way, it's the way the formula was based. Some other districts might have higher transportation costs, uh, and that's going to increase their overall share. So the governor did recommend a two-point-five SSA rate, and that would increase the transportation aid by about seven-hundred thousand dollars for, for next fiscal year. And then just kind of some other uh, recommendations that the, the governor made. Governor recommended a one-time supplemental appropriation for fiscal year twenty, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one of twenty million dollars. And it's going to be in the form of some type of grant uh, to the Department of Education to reward school districts that were doing in-person learning for the current school year. Governor recommended maintaining that AEA reduction at the additional fifteen million dollars, provided five-hundred thousand dollars for classroom environment, professional development. And then some two-million-dollar appropriation for the therapeutic classroom incentive fund and to help fund transportation for that. And then kind of the bad news, I, I would say, is the new appropriation she's recommending for the educational savings grants. Um, think about this, is it's taken away, you know, dollars for public schools to help fund non-public and homeschool assistant program or homeschool students. So um, this was in her budget, um, not a good thing because it is a funding that could have gone to uh, public schools. So just some, some of my final thoughts. Um, the legislature is required by law to set the SSA rate within thirty days of the governor's budget recommendation. And when we look at that, that, that date would be February eleventh. Hopefully, they will get that done and it'll give you a good idea of what your budget might look like for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Because that is their big policy decision that does impact school aid funding. Um, and I think it's important to point out too, that the last couple of legislative sessions, governors come out with their recommendation. Um, you know, last year was two-point-five percent, but the legislature's actually set the rate below what the governor's recommended. Hopefully, we see reverse of that this year. We would like to see a higher rate. It's within the budget, but uh, you know, past practice, hopefully, if they reverse that, that's, I guess, what I could say. I think it's important too, tell your district story, you know, talk to your legislators. Did you have an enrollment decline? What's the impact? Let them know what that impact is. Same, same thing too, you're probably going to hear about all the COVID funds that your district received. Well, you need to remind them that those are, you know, for a spur, a certain purpose, and it's one-time funding only. You know, it's not going to be paying for your salaries in the future, whereas supplemental state aid helps cover those costs going into the future. And then I think it's important too to kind of see what happens with the REC in March. Hopefully, you know, we're, we're going to come out of this and, you know, we'll get some positive estimates and maybe some positive information from that REC. But that's definitely that's something that we should, we should definitely keep an eye on.
Sean, a couple of questions on this final thought. One, um, how often in the last, I mean, when was the last time they actually set their supplemental state aid before the deadline?
What a good question. So it's technically, they haven't met the law requirement for like ten years, I think. It's been a long time. Um, it's important to note that they might say they've actually set the rate, but the law requires that the, the rate be enacted. So that means the governor has to sign it. So I think last year, they probably did set the rate before the date, but the governor didn't sign the bill until after the date. So um, it's been a long time.
So it's likely that though, that they will set the rate in time enough for um, school districts to perhaps input it into their deliberations and their aid levy. Uh, but prior to its publication and approval by April fifteenth.
That is the hope. Other decis, other decisions that are going to impact all that too are, are they going to have some type of preschool program budget guarantee? Are they, what enrollments are they going to use? Um, you know, those are all decisions too that are going to have an impact on what the school districts' budgets look like for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two.
And then enrollment, how many, I mean, roughly, how many school districts had a decline or a percentage, um, you know?
Two-thirds lost, two-thirds districts lost enrollment. And the districts that gained enrollment didn't gain as many students as they probably would have. So I think that's important to note as well.
And then the last thing, you talk about the REC estimates in March. What's the, what's the uh, reason for that and how does the legislature have to react to that?
Well, the REC meets in March to kind of review their December estimates. So if the REC would increase their March estimates compared to the December estimates, nothing changes. The legislature would still have to work with the December estimates, uh, when they're setting the budget. However, if the REC comes in in March and lowers their estimates, then the legislature would actually have to come in and use that lower amount when they're appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. So that's why, since we have so much uncertainty right now, um, yeah, I think it's important to keep an eye on. And I will say though, I mean, I monitor our overall tax revenues uh, almost on a daily basis. And um, you know, while the tax revenue growth isn't, you know, robust by any means, I think they're, they're coming in above what the REC had estimated. And so that's a good thing. So it's just something kind of has to be.
Well, that's all the questions that I have, but I would also kind of reach out to our fellow panelists and see if they have any thoughts that they would like to share on the state picture as well. And Sean, while they're thinking about that, I would say thank you very much. Thanks for all your hard work and um, you always make it sound so much simpler than it really is. Because I know how complex is, of the state budget can be. Emily, did you have some thoughts on that you might want to share?
Um, no, Patty, I, I'm ready to kind of give my update on what's going on with the legislature, um, which sort of feels very nicely with what Sean presented.
So go ahead, Emily, why don't you do that?
Thanks, Patty. Um, I'm going to just give an apology upfront. I have two dogs who have been howling and barking at anything that walks by. So if you hear that, I'm safe, dogs are just protecting me. Um, so let's talk a little bit about what's going on up there. So Sean did a really good job, I think, of laying out the budget picture and the way in which legislators will make decisions. Um, I think there are three really important facts for you to know. Number one, um, this is a challenging year for professional lobbyists, um, like myself and Phil to work. Um, it's probably a year in which your advocacy, and Phil's going to talk about this later, is even more important. Um, based on COVID, members aren't coming out, they're not wandering the rotunda. It makes it very, very challenging for us to actually interact with them in the way that we're used to doing. So keep that in mind when you listen to Phil, because what he's trying to tell you is we're going to need you more than ever to advocate that. Um, number two, the debate about declining enrollment and hold harmless, um, is one that I think most legislators have finally reached the conclusion that, you know, declining enrollment and the issue of on-time funding for those districts with attendance, um, increases, isn't unique to a pandemic year. What's unique is the number of districts that actually had declining enrollment. And so the real battle is going to be over whether or not they let the provisions that we have in place now work for districts. I.e. the budget guarantee, um, as well as for those districts with increasing enrollment, their ability to go to the SBRC and ask for additional spending authority. Third, I think, um, at least on the House side, it's fair to say that the governor's proposal was disappointing. Um, not just the, the breadth of policy issues, but the fact that she proposed two-point-five percent. Now, in her defense, and I am not defending this, people get very focused on the percentage. And so her thing is, I don't care what the percentage generates. If I don't propose at least two-point-five percent every year, people will accuse me of cutting education funding. And that's one of the dynamics that we really need to start thinking about in terms of, is it really the percentage or the amount of new money? Because I think that from our standpoint, it's more about how much new money can we get? She was more focused on the percentage. Um, I, the Senate's always going to come in more conservative, right? We've seen that year after year. It's been the House that's helped raise them to a more reasonable level. And I think that will be the same thing this year. I've heard from a number of House Republicans that they were very disappointed, um, in the governor's recommendation. The other thing that I've heard is that while everyone recognizes that those districts that have been in-person, have incurred costs that are above and beyond what the federal stimulus dollars are covering, and they want to help you cover that gap, they aren't necessarily, um, as supportive of a straight-up twenty-million-dollar, um, grant program. Um, they would like to have a little more data. So there, I think you should expect that we'll be asking, and the DE will be asking, to collect more data. They are very committed to covering that difference because they're very committed to having in-person instruction. They recognize that there are costs associated with that. Um, so when I take a look at SSA, I think, again, um, you know, Sean, I, I will just tell you this. We have an internal pool every single year. And Sean is an eternal optimist, and he keeps betting that they will get it done within the statutory deadline, and he keeps losing. I mean, it's great because we get a free lunch out of it, but poor Sean. Um, you know what, Sean, they're not going to meet February eleventh. But I think he's right that they will come sooner than, um, when you need to start certifying your budgets. Um, and I think that they will be higher than the twenty million dollars in new money that the governor recommended. But I think you have to be prepared that there are a lot of legislators who have never paid attention to the fact that the budget guarantee is implemented every single year. Um, in the last five years, we had a high of twenty-five and a half million dollars when we had a zero percent SSA, to a low of eight-point-three million dollars, which was last year. If they did a four-point, a four percent SSA rate, which is approximately ninety million dollars, which is what they've done in the last couple of years, that's a seven-point-three-million-dollar budget guarantee impact. So I, you know, I think from your standpoint, understand that for whatever reason, they've all of a sudden decided, hey, wait, the budget guarantee kicks in. Um, but the fact of the matter is, is they recognize that they need to be better than the two-point-five percent that the governor proposed. So Patty, with that, I think the best thing to do is turn it over to Phil and let him tell folks how you can best advocate in a time of a pandemic.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I will go ahead and uh, I guess, start it here with uh, some advocacy tips for you. And, you know, first, I'll just start out with something that we've all, uh, uh, put together for all of you. And uh, you either should have gotten it or uh, you will be getting it, but it is also on our website. But it's our twenty-twenty-one legislative guide in that, on page five, kind of right in, uh, in the middle, are legislators that, uh, specifically asked that question. What is the best way to advocate during uh, COVID? And we have a, a, a former school board member, um, who, who is now a, a, a legislator. We got, um, that was Senator Chris Conoyor. We have Representative Doc Richard, who's the House Minority Leader. And then also Representative Dustin Height, who is the new House Education Chair. And so they, uh, responded and, you know, kind of what they said was uh, relationships, relationships, uh, relationships. And um, you know, not being afraid to uh, uh, reach out. And uh, as Emily said, it, it is a very different year uh, for advocating at the Capitol. Um, you know, us being up there, as, as she said, you know, legislators aren't coming out uh, to talk to the lobbyists in, in the rotunda. We're having to uh, email and text and, and phone call and try and set up Zoom meetings with them. Um, and that seems to, to be working uh, fairly well. So I would uh, tell you, um, in, in this time, to make sure that you reach out, uh, the email, text, or, or phone call. Uh, I was in a, a, a meeting last week with a, a panel of legislators and, and they said, you know, pick, pick up the phone and call. If it's very important, uh, pick up the phone and call. You know, we might not be able to answer the call right then and there. Uh, but, you know, leave us a message and, and we'll get back to you. Because um, if it's important enough for a constituent to call, uh, they, they will return that call. And, you know, it, it is really important that legislators know uh, the impacts of COVID, uh, how it has impacted your, your district and what kind of, of resources that, that you need. And, you know, our message on supplemental state aid has been, you know, pretty, pretty consistent. Uh, as, as Emily pointed out, you know, over the last few months or, or a couple of years, uh, they've been pretty consistent with that ninety-million-dollar figure that they've decided uh, between ninety and, and a hundred million dollars is what they would spend on, on K-12 public schools. So SSA, transportation, cost per pupil. So we're uh, asking the same. And, you know, with, with enrollments being down, that money goes farther. And um, you know, that helps build the base for, uh, for, for future years. And so that's what we're uh, looking at. And so, you know, when you do meet with them, you know, uh, tell them the, the things that, that you're doing. Um, you know, map out the expenses that you've had to do uh, for, for COVID for, uh, to, to ensure uh, in-person learning. Um, we know that that is a big priority for uh, not only the legislature, but the governor as well. Um, you know, she. Um, you know, she talked about that in, in her speech. So, you know, making sure that you're talking to them, uh, about the things that they've had to do. And yes, while you, you have gotten some federal money and, and, you know, potentially more federal money, uh, is on its way. Uh, as Sean said, you know, those are pretty strict, um, in, in their allowable uses. And I, and I don't know about you, but, um, I'm not sure that I want to, uh, rely on Washington DC and, uh, to, to, uh, send us that money because at some point, uh, that money's not going to, uh, uh, continue. You know, that, that's a one-time expense. So outlining and mapping out, you know, the expensive you, the expenses that you've had, uh, the things that, that that money has not covered, um, and saying, you know, while the short term that this money can help, we're also, you know, as, as you all know, you're, you're budgeting three, four, or five years out. Um, that federal money is not going to be, not going to continue to come three and four and, and five years from now. So, um, you know, making sure that you're always, uh, letting your legislators know, uh, what, what you need. And so I think, uh, another, uh, thing, too, is when you are advocating, uh, if you do send an email, you know, that, this has kind of been pretty consistent with, if you talk to, uh, uh, legislators, is, is make sure that you do not send form letters. Um, I saw, I was, uh, in a, a, another Zoom meeting on advocacy and there was a firm that polled, uh, chief of staff and legislative, uh, uh, directors for, uh, federal officials. And what they said that, you know, they get a, a ton of emails a day, probably close to eighty percent of those emails come in in form letters. You know, the form letters that a, you know, a, a group would send out and say, you know, sign, sign your name and, you know, send, send this letter to Senator Grassley or, um, Representative Axny or, you know, whomever, um, to support this or oppose this, sign your name and, uh, send it on. And, uh, every legislator will tell you after the first four or five that, that they're the exact same thing, just a different name, that they start deleting them. And, uh, so they, those, uh, people were polled, those legislative directors were polled and said, you know, eighty, eighty percent of their emails are form letters and three percent. And, you know, and, and that's effective about three percent of the time. So, you know, if you, if you're going to take the time to write an email, your, your legislator or legislators will respond. Um, and so, you know, personalizing emails, uh, tend to be much more, uh, effective than form letters. Um, yeah, I've, I've had several legislators tell me that, you know, if a constituent reaches out, takes the time, you know, and it doesn't have to be, uh, you know, a, a masterpiece of American literature, you know, your, your email, you know, just some concise points and say, you know, this is why this is important and, and I, I hope to have your support or, uh, uh, proposition to this. They're, they're going to take the time to, to read that and, uh, respond. And so, you know, as you're writing an, an email or, uh, or, uh, on the phone, you know, make sure that you ask them or, or tell them, uh, what you want them to take, what type of action do you want them to, to take? Do you want them to oppose it? You want them to support it? You know, why is it important to your district? Why is it, or why is it important to your school? Um, because they want to know what's going on in, in their districts and how something would, uh, potentially impact, uh, that district. So, you know, what, as, as Sean had, uh, said previously, you know, what are some personal stories, uh, that, that, that you could share? What are some, uh, uh, you know, what type of connection can you make to them? And in Iowa, you know, everyone is, uh, uh, related to, uh, everybody, you know, everyone knows somebody. And so, you know, there's a very good chance that, um, your state legislator knows somebody back in, in their district that, that could be impacted by this. So, uh, you know, I would just tell you, uh, make sure to, to contact your, um, legislators. Uh, we can help you out with that. Uh, if, you know, if you don't know or say, yeah, you know, I don't really know what to say. You know, how, how do, how do I go about doing that? I don't know who my, um, legislator is because, you know, we just had an, an election and that seems like forever ago. And, uh, and so, you know, kind, uh, help me out with that. We have help for you. Um, if you want to head over to our advocacy page, uh, you will find tools. Uh, Sean's, uh, has a bunch of information on there. Uh, we have talking points on all of our priorities. Um, and we also have our, uh, legislator lookup tool that, that you can, uh, type in your, your information, your school district, and then it, it'll populate your, um, both your, your, uh, state representative and, uh, your state senator. So, um, like I said, um, make sure you, you do that for Thursday, uh, for our, uh, our virtual lobby day. And, you know, as I said, you know, there's a lot of new, um, legislators, so make sure that you are, are talking with them and, uh, you know, tell them that, that you can be an ally to them and, uh, they will rely on you. So I, I just urge you to, uh, uh, get out there and help out Emily and myself.
You know, um, we do have a question and maybe you, uh, or Emily can answer it is, and it's a pretty good one, I think. My legislators are in the minority party. So how much influence will they have on the decisions about school funding?
Patty, that's a great question. Um, and, you know, it's, it's challenging, right? I mean, we're looking at thirty-two eighteen in the Senate and fifty-nine forty-one in the House. What I think that minority members can do is hold legislators in the majority party accountable for the decisions they make. Um, you know, we're not into this whole Democrats love public education, Republicans hate of public education. I, I think that's a, that's a, a mantra that doesn't work, but they can talk about the state of the revenue. They can talk about what's going on. You know, what I tell Democrats is, look, and, you know, this is a, a bigger conversation, but on, on the voucher proposal the governor has, we're not going to focus our attention on you because we know where you're at. We know what you're going to do. We need you to talk about why this isn't good for the rural school districts where there are no non-public schools. And those are the types of things you need to look for. Um, don't, don't ignore them because, you know, one day, they'll be in charge and we want to have those relationships. Um, but at the same time, I think the thing you can ask them to do is help put information out in a positive manner that says, look, the federal funding that we got to cover these additional costs is one-time money. And by the way, it fell short. Um, number two, you know, we're concerned about having adequate resources to teach and provide the kind of educational opportunities we need to do. Number three, these are all the reasons why we have enough parental choice in our system and we don't need any more help. So talk to them, ask them to highlight and stand up for us, but also recognize, you're right. They aren't going to start, they're not going to stop it, but they can at least help generate people who will contact Republicans who are in charge of all three chambers to say this doesn't work.
Thank you very much. Um, so that is what we have tonight. We want to thank you all for participating. Thank you, Sean, thank you, Emily, thank you, Phil, thank you, Michelle. We do appreciate it. Our first lobby day, our virtual lobby day is this Thursday, and you will receive an email, uh, prior to that day with instructions on how to participate and, most importantly, talking points that you can use when you're, uh, dealing with your legislators and sending them those emails and making those phone calls. And I did look and the registration is open for the next, uh, one, next one of our priorities in primetime. And it's on February second, so you can go out and, um, register for that. And we'll be talking about helping mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen on student achievement. So with that, I would just like to say thank you, everybody. Is there anything that I forgot to say that any of the panelists would like to say as well? Thank you very much for coming. Enjoy the rest of your evening, have a great week, and we'll see you on February second. Bye, everyone.